Hello, everyone. We are going to start the meeting today.
Rule call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, September 4th, 20...September, what are we at? Eighteenth, 2024, at 6:30 PM.
Please stand for a moment of...
Wait, I didn't take... Members Flores, Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, and Trup. Mr. Witherspoon is absent.
Please stand for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need approval of the minutes from the September 4th meeting as amended, and bills for payment September 20th and 27th. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schoff, Titus, Trup, and Flores.
Mr. Witherspoon is absent, and in his absence, Mr. Roosevelt Benjamin will present the Heart of the Lion Award to a young man, I believe, who has been working with them all summer. So if you will come forward, please. We will present this to you, so you can present it to...
Come on up. You can read this if you want, if you have something else to add.
How you doing? My name is Roosevelt Benjamin. I'm one of the directors at Mill Witherspoon Summer Program. And each year, we have, we pick a kid or two, who actually, we call the Heart of the Lion, who comes and participates, great sportsmanship, help leads his team. Sometimes he might not even play minutes, but he's there to lead his team on and off the, on and off the court. So this year, our Heart of the Lion goes to Jordan Grayson. Jordan Grayson played in the 12U, or 11 and 12-year-olds of, I forgot the name, let me see what 12 was. The City of Erie, actually. He played for the City of Erie on Spoon Summer League, so I'm here to represent him.
Take the trophy, Bruce.
Is he here?
Yeah, is he? Okay, well, um...
Can I take your picture?
Well, unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it, so hopefully, he enjoys his trophy that he earned.
Smile.
Thanks for all your hard work, Bruce.
Thank you.
Good job.
All righty, so next, we will do Ms. Fredda Teford, who is here to present in EAC, the Erie, I don't know, the Environmental Advisory Council.
Right. So you've seen me lots of times, but I'm here specifically in my role as Chair of the Environmental Advisory Council. Excuse me. So there's 167 environmental advisory councils in Pennsylvania, and they're in townships and cities all over, but, and I think the next closest one is in Meadville. The purpose of the City of Erie Environmental Advisory Council is to propose and to recommend solutions to environmental issues as identified by either City Council, the mayor, the EAC members, and/or the general public to carry out the duties outlined in the City Ordinance Section 198.05. And the members include myself, Chair, Matt Puzz, Vice Chair, John Campbell, Secretary, Bob Houghton, Sister Pat Lupo, Erin Care. She calls herself Sam Mason, but I can't help it. She's Dr. Sherry Mason. She should be recognized as that. Members are citizens of Erie and are appointed by either City Council or the mayor. It was established by the ordinance. Our first meeting was 11/29/2023. We meet the fourth Wednesday of the month at 3:00 PM, and we are, you can watch us on Facebook, and I think you can see our meetings on YouTube. The role of the environment, well, some of our roles are, the EAC shall have the power to identify environmental problems and recommend plans and programs to appropriate agencies, make recommendations as to the possible use of open land areas in the municipality, promote a community environmental program, keep an index of all open areas, public or privately owned, advise the appropriate local government agencies, Planning Commission, Parks and Recreations, et cetera, in the acquisition of both real and personal property by a variety of means for environmental purposes. We do not make land use or other regulatory decisions. We do not replace or compete with a planning commission or other boards, and we do not enforce ordinances. The NEAC can be involved with open space protection, sustainable parks, addressing climate change, invasive species removal, stream cleanup, and water and air quality monitoring. Currently, we have two priorities, the Local Climate Action Plan, and it's a comprehensive policy tool that outlines specific actions a community will take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and/or adaptation policies a community can undertake to counter the negative effects of climate change. And the first step in coop, we were in partnership with the main campus of Penn State, and they helped us to do the greenhouse gas inventory. However, that inventory is lacking national fuels data. There's some missing rail and shipping data as well. So that is the first step, is to have that inventory. We've been invited to go back and work again with Penn State for the next year, and we would be finishing the components of the greenhouse gas inventory, as well as beginning the stages of a climate action plan. Also, the city had a small grant called Partners for Places, and that was involved community outreach, and I think there were about five to seven different meetings with the community groups who, not, not every community group that might have participated did participate. It's kind of hard for individual groups to opt into some of these programs, but I participated as, as a participant with a group that was run by the LEAF organization. And the people from the city residents, members of organizations, were trained by the consultant to run the workshop completely. So I don't think there was anybody there from the contractor. It was just the LEAF people, and we, you know, went through the kind of surveys that you're used to, to identify concerns related to climate change. So after that, the results of those, the Partner for Places public outreach will be put together and used to apply for the next planning grant, and then finally, an implementation grant. So we're going to set goals and actions for inventory, for a climate action plan, obtain resources for implementation, and implement the plan. Our secondary priorities are single-use plastics and litter mitigation, and we're looking at identifying ways to have portable water stations for public events, and considering a citywide reusable food waste program. Are you waving it because I'm out of time, or? No.
Yeah, you just started presenting to us.
You're just warm. Okay, so, so that's pretty much what I had, unless anybody had any questions.
Does anyone in council have any questions for Fredda?
My only question would just, I would be very curious in seeing the Climate Action Plan and sitting down, and just kind of going over the plan and seeing what issues are...
Right, we're like in the pre-stages, yeah. But we will be working with the Penn State group, and I'm not sure if we'll have another consultant as well. Depends on what kind of funding we get, but I think the Penn State participation, I don't think there's a cost involved.
Do you have any community engagement coming up that the community can participate with you?
Well, we have our meetings, and anybody's welcome to come. There is a public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. We're still working on our secondary priorities, and we're not yet in the stage of, the next stage of going out for public involvement related to the Climate Action Plan. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're players in the Climate Action Plan. I would say probably the planning department is the primary mover on that, because that's what they do.
No talking, please. She's talking. A council meeting is here to present to the council. Citizens will have their time to speak, please.
But certainly, there will be robust opportunities to comment on putting a plan together and commenting on the plan. I mean, as long as I'm chair, it'll be robust, anyway.
Well, I'm sure we will find information in the future on what you guys are working, well, ladies and guys, and people who are working in the Environmental Advisory Committee. I know you guys have your monthly meeting, so you do have your public notice that you guys advertise, so I will make sure that I at least comment about it in the future. That way, people know when the future meeting is. When is your next meeting?
Next Wednesday at 3:00. And there is, it does say in our bylaws that we shall have associate members. So we have, just because we're still getting our feet under ourselves, figure out how we would go about recruiting some associate members in the community. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. All righty, so after, after that, I ask, is there anyone here to speak on a repository? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository? Is there anyone here to speak on a repository? So I don't see or hear any, so we will move on. So we will ask that the media please line up on the left aisle, facing the stage, and citizens to line up on the right aisle, to avoid confusion. I would like to ask that the public to clearly state your name and municipality for the record. You will have five minutes to be heard, and this is your time to speak, so please be respectful of each other. Everyone can be heard. Thank you.
My name is Cole Shinley, and I live in the City of Erie. I'm here tonight to oppose the proposed ordinances related to public drinking. I myself do not drink alcohol at all, but I don't judge others that choose to imbibe. I've spent my adult life hanging out in bars with friends and family that do enjoy alcoholic beverages. While I do worry about excessive drinking and its long-term health effects, I trust people to make their own decisions when it comes to their bodies. My biggest concern with these proposals is the potential for aggressive enforcement aimed at our poorer citizens. Over the years, I've seen iterations of this council figure out ways of removing what it perceives as riffraff that hangs out downtown. This council has done so ostensibly in service to certain sectors of the business community. Instead of investing in services that might help to organically change the nature of our downtown community, punitive laws are proposed. We need real solutions that build up our entire community, not make attempts at clearing out Perry Square because a couple of wealthy CEOs think poor people in the park affects their bottom line. When I was in the caucus meeting, I heard one member of council talk about their fears that this kind of ordinance could become a stop and frisk, and I hadn't thought of that, but that does worry me. We saw how awful that was in New York City, and the way that it affected especially our BIPOC members of our community. I would not want to see something like that happen here in Erie. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Louise Inberleyo. I'm a retired faith community nurse.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you speak up or into the mic? You can move it down if you need to.
My name is Mary Louise, is, can you hear me now? No?
Speak louder if you would. Yell at us.
My name is Mary Louise Inberleyo. I'm a faith, I'm a retired faith community nurse who worked as a nurse case manager for many years. I retired from Erie County Department of Health in 2014, and have been working with the, as an outreach advocate and direct care with the homeless since then. I am a member of Voices of Homeless Advocates, which consists of people with lived experience of homelessness and community allies. We are a group who believe that people who are homeless should be involved in finding solutions to the issues that affect homelessness. I agree that there is a problem that needs to be addressed, but when I read the proposed ordinance, I had concerns and questions. Consider that man or woman struggling with sobriety, who is not ready for rehab or has failed rehab since returning to the street frequently defeats staying sober. The choice is not to drink, or to go and go into DTs, or to drink and be arrested. Or what about the person who's living in their car? What about the proposed consequences of the infractions of the ordinance? I have to question if this is another layer of criminalization of homelessness. People who are homeless are individuals just as we are. Homelessness is a very complex issue. These individuals have histories of traumas, abuse, physical and mental illnesses, and many times addictions added to the mix. For some of them, this has been familial and/or generational. Traumas and mental illnesses significantly lead to the use of drugs and alcohol as a way of coping. All of this is exacerbated in persons who are experiencing the added traumas and indignities of homelessness. Just as important, however, is what will happen to the families and friends who use the city parks to gather for picnics and reunions and want to serve beer and wine. I was very impressed by the number of city parks I found during my research. You have those papers with you. And what about people in the housing complexes, especially those downtown, whose outdoor space is the city sidewalk? For these people, their front stoop is the sidewalk, where they meet and socialize, and the downtown parks are their yards. We have all seen the people outside Richard Arms, Tulio Towers, and Mid-City Towers, or the universities whose dorms flow out onto the city streets, or the restaurants whose tables, who set up tables on the sidewalks for outside dining. I think there may be an unattended, unintended effect of this ordinance that significantly is more widespread and punitive than targeting the specific target, I'm sorry. I think there may be an unintended effect of this ordinance that is significantly more widespread and punitive than targeting the specific group intended. Thank you for this forum that allows discussion before making an ordinance that will change the lives of so many residents in Erie, not just the downtown homeless. I don't know the answers, but I do appreciate your efforts to address this problem, and thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Lawson, resident of Erie, business owner, taxpayer, voter. I'm here with a number of people tonight to oppose the open container ordinance changes in the City of Erie. In 2016, James &amp; Deb Fallows touted in their book that breweries and distilleries were one of the key factors in economic development and recovery from our last recession. Erie was highlighted as a place where this was evident, and breweries have become a $60 billion investment in the United States, with Pennsylvania ranking second among income through breweries. All of these people here tonight are locals who have taken the step to open a business, and we are here to argue whether or not they should be allowed to continue to be business owners, taxpayers, employers in the City of Erie. Young people need things to do in the City of Erie. We want people to move here, and what we're really doing is closing down events that we've spent hundreds of millions of dollars developing our downtown, and people look forward to all summer. I cannot imagine a city I grew up in where nothing truly has happened that would really lead us to this decision, as opposed to utilizing the laws that are already in place to mitigate the problem that we think we see. As opposed to forming additional laws or ordinances, I think we need to utilize the resources that are already in front of us to protect these people who have made a massive investment in our community and employ hundreds of people. And truly, if we are going to invest in Erie, and tout Erie as a tourist town, and base our economy in tourism, we cannot take away the things people come here for. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Fredda Teford, and now I speak totally as myself. Cole and, I'm sorry, I don't get your name.
Mary Louise.
Mary Louise were both very eloquent about what they had to say about the open container ordinance. I, I used to deliver meals on wheels to all of the high-rises downtown, and most of those people don't have an outdoors. Their outdoors is Perry Square and the streets, and they deserve to have an outdoor experience that is more like the ones that we can have because we have a backyard, or our more ability to do that. And that's, that's really all I'm going to say about that. As far as the item on the ordinance about zoning, I, I read through it today, and I'm confused why in every one of the waterfront districts, we're saying that, that it's an appropriate land use in the waterfront district to have off-street parking. Do we really want to pave more of our waterfront district for off-street parking? Is that the best and wisest use of that, of that property? I also call to your attention in that ordinance, the improper use of the term handicapped in a couple of places, in the section on defining family, and one other place, which I think I've emailed almost all of you, but that's, or most of you, pardon me, but that's not, no longer considered an appropriate term, and if you go back to anything that references the Federal Fair Housing Act, you will not find them using that term anymore. Also, when we use it in terms of parking, there, it's accessible parking, it's accessible curb ramps, it's just no longer considered an appropriate term. I do want to say that I was disappointed that in my neighborhood, I saw in the installation of curb ramps on 22nd and Haybarger, a practice which was supposed to not be happening anymore. All four of the corners were torn up probably last Thursday. They're still inaccessible. There's no advance warning at a point where you can make a decision of where to go, and really, there is nowhere to go because all four corners are torn up. That was not supposed to happen anymore. I don't know whether it was not in the contract specs, or it was a failure of administration of the contract, but it should not be happening anymore. I am also concerned when I see parking using the right-of-way where there's no sidewalk, like on West 26th Street, on the south side of the street, between Green Garden and the next street, which on the south side is not Haybarger, but on that little strip mall there, the parking to the east, they're parking all the way to where I wanted to walk, and then beyond that, where there actually is a little piece of sidewalk, they've parked further back. If they have enough room to park where there was sidewalk, they didn't need to be blocking the sidewalk where I should have been able to safely walk. And there are innumerable places in the city where businesses are using what should be the sidewalk for parking or equipment storage, and that's not how we have safe travel for people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Lavery. I vote in Mill Creek, but I own two businesses here in the city, so most of my tax dollars go to the city. My wife and I have owned Lavery Brewing Company at 128 West 12th Street for 15 years. We just celebrated our 15th anniversary in August. I speak to you tonight to encourage and embolden you to vote no on this silly open container ban. Does Erie have a homeless problem? We're a city, so of course we do. Will this law do anything to alleviate this problem? And of course, it will not. In almost 800 weeks that I've owned Lavery Brewing Company, I've probably made 250 calls to the non-emergency line to the Erie Police Department, and zero of those calls have been for homeless people drinking. Mental health, hard drugs, vandalism, loitering, but never because a homeless person was drunk. This law is intended to give the police the power to stop and frisk this population, to help clean up our city, while I can tell you, the people that this ordinance will affect are not the homeless. For instance, public drunkenness is already illegal in our city. How many arrests have been made for that? Smoking cigarettes in Perry Square is illegal. How many citations have been written to enforce that? Loitering and disorderly conduct are also illegal. How many homeless people have been charged with that? I have so much respect for our police, I deal with Offload of Roswell weekly, and that's why I know Erie can do a better job enacting another law. If this law is passed and open containers illegally roam, sorry, paired with public drunkenness and disorderly conduct, infinite questions remain. This population, this law is targeting, will still carry open containers, be drunk in public, and be disorderly. And what are the proposed enforcement or fines for this? The population this ordinance targets already does not follow the law, so you're going to find a homeless man with a beer while another homeless man smokes a decriminalized joint next to him? Can this person pay the fine, jail time? As a city, we can do better. On the flip side, the negative consequences for this silly ordinance are the law-abiding citizens of Erie who enjoy our ethnic festivals, where we celebrate culture and drink regional beer on the streets, St. Patrick's Day revelers who spend a fortune at local restaurants every March, and the fun-loving tourists who make the trip to Erie to enjoy our breweries, wineries, waterfront, and hospitality. Erie is the third-largest city in the U.S. that allows open containers. I've heard some say, well, we can't drink downtown in Pittsburgh, or Buffalo, or Cleveland. Well, bring us a football team like the Steelers, a basketball team like the Cavs, or a hockey team like the Sabres, and we can reevaluate this ordinance. For now, it is a part of our unique cultural identity, attracts tourists, feeds the local economy, and moves all, most of all, makes Erie an awesome place to live. I heard that there will be a permit that can be pulled to allow some open container policies, but I don't trust our city knows how to do this efficiently. How much will it cost? How long will it take? What's the criteria for approval/rejection? This issue is not black and white, and must be examined more before you vote yes. Speaking of economic drivers, Erie is now dominated by tourism and hospitality, not manufacturing. This new ordinance will cost local restaurateurs hundreds of thousands of dollars. That number may be high or low, but we'll never know because this council decided to rush this ordinance through without doing a study session of what will impact our local community. And by us, I mean the employers of this city. The money we make goes to paying our employees, providing health insurance, and their 401Ks. Why would any of you want to hurt local businesses and take money out of our... Why would any of you want to hurt local businesses and take money out of our pockets? Erie is just starting to pick itself up and claim our new tourist identity. Don't try and stop us before we get a chance to show you all what we're capable of. So in summation, we have laws on the books to address the issues this ordinance claims to fix. Open containers are part of our cultural identity, and one of the many things that makes Erie fun, and this ordinance will directly hurt hundreds of local businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me, although I am quite frustrated on being here today and even having to talk about this issue. I am following my husband, Jason Lavery. My name is Nikki, Dr., Nikki Lavery, actually. I'm the co-owner of Lavery Brewing Company, along with my husband, Jason. I'm also an associate professor at Gannon University and a current board member at the Upper Room, which assists individuals who are unhoused. I'm here to discuss my personal perspective on this open container ordinance that you are trying to end. As a business owner, my company creates and manufactures beer, which I know several of you have enjoyed on many occasions. My business, along with manufacturing beer, is also a community advocate, and we are very involved in growing our city and our businesses. I feel personally that this type of law demonizes the very product that my company makes. With this new amendment, this city, sorry, what this new amendment is demonizing, or what this new amendment I need to read, because I'm frustrated. What this new amendment is saying to the people of our city is that individuals who drink beer are dangerous and can't be trusted to consume an alcoholic beverage responsibly outside of a brick-and-mortar building. This is entirely false, and those of you that do enjoy a beverage or two, I have met you and seen you at my brewery, you're including yourselves in this over-generalization of beverage over consumers. This leads to my second point, that overturning open containers punishes the individuals who are drinking responsibly and want to have the freedom to walk around with a legal beverage while enjoying our amazing city. They also want to enjoy our parks and be able to sit there with their friends and family while celebrating events and other opportunities that they have surrounding them within these beautiful spaces. I read an article recently where John Persinger, the previous EDDC president, stated that 12 people are taking downtown hostage. Why are the rights of an entire city being attacked for 12 people? Thirdly, in 2018, City Council did vote to decriminalize the use of marijuana to help reduce fines and criminal offenses, but now you want to criminalize beer? It doesn't seem right, and it seems a little backwards. As a downtown business owner who manufactures alcohol, who resides near the Mental Health Association and the Upper Room, we deal with the unhoused population often. We have never had to call the police due to public intoxication. Individuals that we encounter typically are under the influence of illegal drugs or have mental health crises. So again, I'm unsure where this fear of alcohol is coming from. Speaking of the unhoused, I feel that this change of law is meant to target individuals who are unhoused. I feel this is a very slippery slope. I became a member of the Boardroom of the Upper Room to help these individuals, to help solve these problems, and I feel this law is meant to control this vulnerable population instead of helping them find solutions to their issues. This policy threatens to fine and throw these individuals in jail, which seems a bit discriminatory. I don't believe for one second that this won't lead to further discrimination against other cultures and minorities. Finally, I know that you feel this can be solved with permits and ordinances, but upon researching your special events permits, when applying for one of these for the city, you need to have liability insurance of over $1 million. I fear this type of permitting policy will limit business opportunities and creative spaces, which people want to freely gather, including small businesses and events that are currently taking place, such as Porch Fest, Downtown Erie Food Tours, charity bar crawls, and other events that encourage cultural and ethnic gatherings that may not be able to afford your permits and insurance policies. I encourage you to keep Erie's freedoms available for future creators and future business owners, and don't take away these opportunities that make our community great.
I'm Martha Wachuku. I reside in Erie. I'm a community organizer with Erie County United, and I'm actually here not to talk about the open container ordinance. I'm here to talk about renters' issues across the city of Erie. For the last several months, myself and a team of members have been knocking doors and talking to renters across the city about their issues as people who live in apartment units, and we have collected the signatures of 1,000, over 1,200 people for a right-to-council ordinance. What we're hoping, in me being present here, is to present to you, Council, this ordinance or this idea that renters across the city of Erie are underrepresented, and renters across the city of Erie represent a broad brush of our population, whether they be new Americans, Black Americans, Hispanics, working-class, white people, everyone is affected by the housing crisis across Erie. Over my time, over the last few months, in being a renter myself, I have heard many horror stories of people with sewage issues, pest issues, disrespectful landlords, rent being hiked up 300 to 400 bucks all of a sudden. And I actually want to congratulate and thank the Gann City Council last October, coming up on a year of you passing the rental housing ordinance, where you protected victims of domestic violence from being evicted. You made sure that renters now have 60 days' notice before the change of their lease or hike in price, so I'm here to advocate for you to pass renters' rights to council. So what does that mean? As you may know, a lot of renters are working-class people. We cover a broad brush of economic background, but many of us, when we face eviction or a crisis with our landlords, we stand underrepresented. In Pittsburgh, Mayor Ed Gagne and his city council just passed the right-to-council. In Philadelphia, in 2019, they passed the right-to-council, and another example nationally would be Connecticut. Whenever these laws exist in cities, evictions, at least in Philadelphia, 91% of tenants who receive legal representation were able to avoid disruptive displacement, which I actually think ties into our conversation today around the open container laws, and a lot of people feel that this may be targeting homeless people. We, as a community, need to make sure that we're protecting renters and preventing them from being displaced and put onto the streets. So I stand here as a renter myself, in community with a lot of different renters. There's a significant amount of us in the city who are dealing with crises. At our last meeting, over the last week, we heard from an Afghani man who is dealing with lead in his building and who lives in the part of the city where a lot of new American people are living in buildings that have not been retrofitted or upgraded, and they're dealing with health problems. I've been talking to a lot of people living in public housing, where these landlords are receiving public tax dollars through subsidies, vouchers, and et cetera, but they refuse to upkeep their housing. So I'm here as one voice out of 1,200 growing, hoping to talk to you all individually about this ordinance or the possibility of this ordinance in law, and just beginning to have a real conversation about renters' issues across the city of Erie. I would typically stay to the end of the meeting to try to catch you, but I will have to go give someone a ride tonight. But again, I just, I'm going to use all my time to the best of my abilities to highlight that renters across the city of Erie are in crisis. We need your attention on our issues. We need you to know that people are suffering from lead poisoning. We need you to know that people have sewage dripping down their ceilings. We need you to know that repairs are not being made. We need you to know that people are living in public housing being charged $800 to $1,000. Our renters across the city are being abused, ignored, and not treated well. So I really want to stand here and just really highlight that these are voices that are not being heard or highlighted in our city. Again, I want to be contacting you. I won't be able to stay to the end of the meeting. I really appreciate your time, and I appreciate the work you even did a year ago on this issue. Thank you. And I have some materials that I want to share with you, so that you have some preliminary information. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff McCullar. I live in Mill Creek, but I own a business in Erie, Erie Ale Works, 416 West 12th. Thanks for the time. Boy, open containers, sticky, huh? There's a lot to, a lot to unpack here. I moved to this town 20 years ago, and as far as I've been an adult person in this town, an open container has been a cool thing to do and to experience in the neighborhood, and moving from brewery to brewery, bar to bar, in a responsible manner, it's certainly set my business on a trajectory to be a cool part of the neighborhood. Our business is three blocks from Lavery Brewing Company, which is two blocks from the Brewery Union Station. In summertime, the warmer months, not just summertime, we get travelers from Buffalo, Cleveland, Pittsburgh, that will visit the Brewery Union Station first for lunch. They'll get a roadie, they'll get a beer to go to Lavery's because they can, not because they want to abuse it, but because they want to experience something they can't do in their town. Then they'll go to Lavery's, and then they'll come to our place, or they'll go backwards, or somewhere in between. This would obviously put a damper on that, and people from out of town really, really appreciate that. From my very casual observations, when you folks are in that other room concussing, it feels like there's some division, that there's still some things that need to be worked out. This is not going to be the end-all, be-all to stop a young female from getting harassed on the street, or somebody getting panhandled as they walk into the Renaissance Center, or anything along those lines. So maybe you should table it for a little bit, have a little bit more homework done, involve some of us if you can, I'm not sure. It's my first city council meeting, so I'm not sure how that actually works. But if you need opinions from those in the industry, I think we're all available. There's a whole line out the door, almost, of people that are willing to provide input. Sure, we recognize that there's some things that need to change in this town, and by the way, from my 20 years living here, the change has been, I think, in an overwhelmingly positive trajectory upward. Look at downtown now versus where it was 20 years ago, and I think anyone involved in that should deserve a pat on the back because I think it's been really tremendous. One thing, if it is council's decision to pass this thing, what's the, what are the numbers associated with it? What's the timeframe? How long are we doing this? Is it possible to, you know, maybe in a year, come back to this, if it does get passed, for instance, and say, "All right, we're going to take an active effort and clean this place up as best we can"? Then what does it look like a year from now? And then maybe we did the job, and we go back to where it was. Something to consider, too. Quantifiable results are something I think that everybody will want to know. Quantifiable results that brought the whole conversation together, like how many complaints and by whom, and then on the other end...
Someone's speaking. You'll get your time to speak.
Sorry, my bad. Yeah, numbers are what drive us as a business, because year-over-year numbers, how many pints sold, how many revenue dollars that we bring in, those are all things that we need to measure, too. I don't know where this actually came from in terms of numbers. That would be very helpful to know, and I think the public would want to know that, too. So then, say we give this up as a community, where do we get out of it? Quantifiably, what do we get? Something to ask yourself as things goes on. Yeah, I guess that's it. So thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Kristen Hubert. I've been a bartender in Erie for over 10 years. I am currently a bartender at Lavery Brewing Company, and I'm the executive director for the Lake Erie Ale Trail. So I get to participate with all 17 breweries involved in that, many of them in Erie, and it's a lot of fun. The events that we get to have here are a lot of fun. Again, I've been bartending up here for 10 years, and I have never had any serious issue with having to deal with somebody that's consumed too much alcohol if it wasn't in the bar. Like, they come from somewhere else, you know, we deal with that responsibly. As bartenders, we're not allowing patrons to become intoxicated and sending them out the door. Whereas responsible and certified alcohol servers, we're not taking advantage of Erie's open container law in order to disrupt businesses on State Street and downtown Erie. There's a far bigger problem at hand that I think should be addressed before we decide to pack more onto what the EPD is responsible for at this present time. I spent a day serving beer at Celebrate Erie this past month, and from noon until we stopped serving beer at 9:30 PM, there was not a single issue that required the police to intervene due to alcohol consumption while myself and two other breweries were present. What did occur was the responsible enjoyment of local craft beer that supported 17, seven different breweries from Erie all the way down to Titusville. As the executive director of the Lake Erie Ale Trail, it is part of my role to cultivate, promote, and claim responsibility for what our brewers and pubs are contributing to the Erie culture, and that is craft beer. Making up a large portion of our community events, enjoying and sharing craft beer at outdoor events fuels our city's economy and attracts tourists from all over. Two weeks ago, I had a restaurant full of people from LA, South Carolina, two different groups from South Carolina, actually, Long Island and Boston. Erie Ale Works has food trucks now coming from Pittsburgh to serve their customer base and enjoy the beers in the parking lot because there's too many people attending to fit in the pub. Speaking of, did you know that they are one of several breweries to host events specifically to raise money and awareness for local organizations that seek to provide assistance to the less fortunate, mentally unwell, and unhoused? This is to say that there are very hard-working individuals that could do a lot of good by enforcing laws that are already in place, as well as organizations that could use funding and more of the city's time rather than passing a law that would divert our city's officers and officials' attention, resources, and effort from what people in Erie could really use them for. What will 90 days in jail do to those that are detained? Would you like to see them as an addition to those that are such a disturbance? I think helping those already in need is something that we could all work together on. Erie has always been a destination for tourism, especially as of late, due to our weather, lake, and the events and people that go with it. Our block parties and festivals have already taken a hit due to COVID, and I think restricting the responsible consumption of our locally sourced and made beer will only hinder the small, family businesses that have given many, many years of their blood, sweat, and tears getting their brew pubs off the ground. I'm asking you to vote no to misuse of time and resources. Vote no to putting mental health and illness aside in order to prove a point, and I'm asking you to vote no to passing this seemingly random assertion of dominance by the people that seek to remove privileges that need not be revoked. Thank you.
My name is Charles McDonough. I'm the head brewer at Lavery Brewing Company, and I do live in the downtown of Erie. I've enjoyed many of the privileges that the open container law does provide to the citizens of Erie. I've enjoyed parking lot beers on a spring day with our mug clubbers and fellow beer enthusiasts. I've taken part in the very unique BYOC culture of Erie Ale Works. I've taken walking beers to Brewery Union Station to visit friends. I've gathered in the streets to enjoy camaraderie with other fans of the Erie Otters and Seawolves. The culture and energy of all these things is something that has brought me to Erie. I frequently leave my brewery to visit my girlfriend, who also works downtown in the city of Erie, to take beers, to enjoy the sunset that is world-class in Erie. This is something that brought me to move to Erie almost two years ago from larger cities like New York and New Jersey because of this culture and tight-knit community atmosphere. It's something that will, I think, undeniably change if these ordinances were to go through. I think, at best, this bill is short-sighted in the fact that I do think, as has been discussed, that there are already tools at disposal to stop what this bill is trying to overcome. I think, I do understand the importance of trying to stop an issue, stop a problem before it comes an issue, of public drunkenness, but that is something that still is something that somebody could be persecuted for, or how to clean up what we're trying to achieve So my thing would be, like, again, metrics would be the thing. So like, if public drunkenness isn't something that is already not a problem that is out of hand, what would this law do to prevent that? And then, you've already made it clear that a lot of these special events, you are going to make special exceptions for. How many of those occurrences happen at these special events? I would imagine a lot of them. I don't think that every day we are seeing these public intoxication incidences that the open container law would prevent. I think, especially, again, in the parks, if we were to make this amendment for it just to be in the parks, you can't smoke in the parks, yet I can. And being in the room before, I think, other people have also realized that we're not achieving the end-all, be-all of what we're trying to in passing this bill. It's especially frustrating when I hear things like, oh, these things weren't issues when, before Country Fair was here, yet if we were to pass something like this, we're again going to penalize small businesses in favor of businesses that are selling, I don't know, 12% alcoholic slushies out the door. I mean, I think that could be a problem, yet we're going to penalize small businesses for these things that we're trying to achieve that we are acknowledging are a problem. But, in short, I think this is, just to pass this would be a lazy and not thought-out policy that is chasing bad policy. It, yeah. I'm just worked up about this whole thing. But, yeah, if, again, if we're going to let a dozen people, that's what the code is, a dozen people hold the town square hostage, we're doing a bad job as a community. Like, that's just a bad job. Like, this, like, any more bad policy on top of that isn't going to fix that. It's just, it's not, I think we could do better as that. And the idea that, oh, we're going to fine these people or imprison them, so I'm imagining the people that we're trying to target with this bill aren't going to have $300 to pay for a fine, so they're going to be imprisoned. So then, something that, that, something, a law that is just a fine for someone who could pay it, and then is imprisonment for somebody who can't, is not a law, it's a privilege of the wealthy. And that's what we're trying to, I think, target this whole community with. On that, I've already probably babble on enough, thank you for your time.
Hey. I'm Olivia Montag. I'm just an upholsterer, and I've lived on Ninth and German for 20 years. I'm not from here, but I've learned to love it here. I raised my daughter here, I opened a business here, because I am a business owner here, as I have been for many years, even though that is overlooked consistently. You are taking away a freedom that has given me peace of mind and just freedom. I have lived other places, and I chose here, because I had somewhere that allowed me to exist as how I am. And if that means a beer while I walk my dog, that's fine. If that means I watch a sunset with wine with my partner, that's fine. But to put me in jail for 90 days and make me one of the homeless people you're trying to kick out of the park with this legislation is nonsense. To make me one of the people you're trying to get rid of is hurtful. I have been here longer than any of you have been in office. I have lived here, I have raised my child here, I have built a business here, and you're worried about the urban problems you have right now. Guess what? We live in a city, and there are homeless people, and there are people with addiction, and there are people with a lot of problems. You know what'd done me better, and my daughter, was support. And you could put the same amount of energy, and time, and resources into supporting us, and making this place better all around, instead of more litigation on top of laws that already exist to fix all the things you're already bitching about. You already have laws for all of this. You are wasting time, and energy, and also love on the people that have made this city what it is, people like me and my daughter, who recently moved back from Philly, who has the ordinance you're wishing to pass, that did nothing. And I've been to Philly multiple times, and New York City, and DC, and Chicago, and Raleigh, and all kinds of cities, I actually travel. Every municipality has exactly what you're talking about, and you know what happened? Nothing. There are still drunk homeless people. I have seen people quite literally passed out on top of a statue with their pants down, high on everything they could get, because there is no prohibition that stops your legislation on morality. Your family-friendly shit comes from you and me, not legislation. And you continuing to target people because my neighborhood will suffer from what you're doing. I actually can't call the police where I live, because they won't treat my neighbors I have had to watch things, I was told today, I don't understand and I can't hear what you're saying, but you don't fucking know what I've lived with. I have watched things happen, because I cannot call the police. They are not good to me, they are not good to my neighbors. You criminalize us for existing, for no reason. We have lived this way for 25 years, and there is no reason to make this change for people that aren't acting badly. You already have laws for the people that are acting badly, so do not criminalize people that are not. Think about the rest of us, that live in neighborhoods that you don't. This is stupid. You have 15 other giant issues you could have dealt with. But let's have less fun, and let's punish non-bad actors for what bad actors do, while the bad actors will continue to do, because historically prohibition has stopped zero things. Heroin is illegal, we still have heroin addicts. We're going to have alcoholics regardless of your ordinance, and the family-friendly environment is based on our community. And if you're going to arrest me for walking around the corner with a beer and put me in jail for 90 days to talk to my neighbor, you are not worried about community. You certainly haven't talked to us, who actually live downtown, who sleep here, who eat here, who shop here, who raise their children here. This is stupid, and it's a waste of time. Thanks.
My name is Darlene Taylor, and I'm a city resident for eight years, okay? I might piss a lot of people off here, but I have been down Perry Square during Celebrate Erie, and there's drunks down there, they expose themselves to little children. And you guys are going to let this law? No, we don't need no more drunks in the city of Erie, okay? Lawrence Park has a container law that you're not allowed to have open containers, period, okay? I don't care who the hell I piss off, but we got to get rid of the druggies, the drunks, and even the drug dealers on the streets down Perry Square. And you guys bypass it. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kyle Hauser, I'm the general manager over at Voodoo. I've worked downtown for about five years now. The city of Erie is a great city. One of the things that I really enjoy about this city is while it is a city, it still maintains this wonderful, small-town feel, where all of the businesses and all of our neighbors, we all stand together. We all work together. All of these businesses partner up to make Erie what it is. Doing this with the open alcohol just stops people from being able to go to their neighbor's house, you know? You can't walk down the street to see a friend with an alcoholic container. We're essentially putting people in their homes and say, don't leave your home, because you're drinking, and we don't want to see that out on our streets. We have our parades and our festivals, where people can enjoy these wonderful events, and enjoy a drink. They're not breaking any laws right now, they're just enjoying a drink. Should it get out of hand, and they be, you know, intoxicated, we already have laws against this. So I don't see a point in punishing people for just enjoying this city and the things that we provide. I think it's a part of our community, and it's very important for us to maintain this family feel, where we can all be a part of something awesome that is the city of Erie. I don't think that this thing will bring any good, I don't think that it's the solution that we're looking for, and I hope that you guys vote against it. Thank you for your time.
Hi, council. My name is Keely Anderson, I have been in the restaurant industry for 15 years and a local business owner, with a different view on the matter of the open container ordinance. I own two restaurants located inside the flagship city food hall. I wanted to come tonight to express my opinion on the open container ordinance in our county. There's a reason that the majority of cities have this ordinance. This is not about putting people behind bars, it's about creating a safe environment that doesn't involve people consuming alcoholic beverages outside of a licensed facility. If you're drinking a beer on your property, you are not the targeted group here. The amendment is to prohibit drinking in public areas. I see no reason outside of events for anyone, homeless or not, to consume alcohol on our streets. It was stated previously that there would be exceptions made for events, attractions, and functions to have permission by the city of Erie to serve alcohol during these special events, and that this ordinance would not impact such events. I'm wondering the revenue being lost on those walking out with an open container, as this ordinance would not be impacting events as previously stated. I know many that walked up here tonight are stating that they're concerned if this ordinance is passed, that it affects the events, when it has already been stated that we can still continue these events, enjoy these events, and there would be exceptions made for these events. I believe that this is the first step in a multi-step process for our community to address safety concerns and preventative measures within our downtown public areas. This is not to put any type of damper on downtown businesses, or any business for that matter. Please hear me out, and let me give an example. With owning these two businesses downtown, my daughters often make the trip from Mill Creek to downtown with me almost on a daily basis, to my businesses. Yesterday, my daughter and I were at an appointment downtown, and we were stopping at the food hall to check on my employees, and she made a comment that said, "Mom, is this a bad part of town?" And in previous conversations, she had said, "Mom, why did you decide to open up your business in the bad part of town? It's scary down here." She is nine years old, she sees people, not just those that are homeless, but those in public housing areas, and those that are living or walking downtown with alcohol, stumbling, mumbling, arguing with each other, et cetera, and is concerned for her safety while being downtown, thus resulting in these difficult questions for me as a business owner downtown. I stand behind the open container ordinance being put into place, and believe it's a great first step in a multi-step process to create a safe environment downtown and change people's views and opinions of downtown Erie. And the last woman that was up here, she had stated that someone exposed themselves in downtown Erie around a child, and this did happen, and I saw this around two weeks ago, we had to have police involved, it was an intoxicated person, homeless or not, that doesn't matter, it was clearly an intoxicated person, and maybe if this ordinance was in place, police could have taken care of this. It's difficult for me to see the other side of this debate, when I frequent Putin Bay, as do 750,000 others per year, most to consume alcohol specifically for events and occasions, and they have an open container law, and people still continue to frequent and visit this area, and it does not seem to negatively impact their tourism rates. With having this ordinance in place, it'll allow police officers to have the ability to protect the public before issues arise, rather than after they arise, thus resulting in lower crime and a safer environment for all, especially those with families and children such as myself. I don't believe a customer consuming a beverage before walking to the stadium, or walking from brewery to brewery, or distillery to distillery, is too much to ask, rather, finish your drink, and then walk to the next location. When the long-term goal here contributes to the overall safety of our city, allowing growth and prosperity to all local businesses, as more families would feel safe walking downtown Erie on weekday evenings or weekends, and contributing to the economy and growth of downtown Erie for all. That's all of us, that's all of our downtown businesses, distilleries, breweries, that's not just my business, that's for everybody, to create a safe environment, to bring more people downtown. This ordinance is not to impact them in a negative manner, because it comes down to safety issues, and I see no reason for anyone to consume alcohol on the streets outside of those special events. Of course we want to have those special events, I agree that we should still continue those, and there should be special exceptions made. This ordinance does not prevent distilleries or breweries from operating, it simply takes the open containers off the street. It does not prevent your local businesses from contributing, or, I'm sorry, from continuing their normal operation. This ordinance does not prevent the actual business from continuing their normal operation, it just simply prevents the customer from leaving with an open container and consuming alcohol on the streets. I believe this open container ordinance is the first step, again, in a multi-step process to drive more families downtown, which overall contributes to the economic growth, success, and safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Drew Whiting. I am a resident of the city of Erie. I am a father of five-year-old twins, who spend a lot of time downtown. I'm also the owner of 1000 State, Five Iron Golf Erie, and I'm the CEO of the Erie Downtown Development Corporation. In my roles downtown as a professional, I oversee businesses that have four different businesses that have liquor licenses, that have the same concerns as a lot of the people who have spoken before us. Not only that, I'm charged with the economic development revitalization of our part of downtown, to the best of my ability and my role. And, as has been made very publicly known in the newspaper over the last couple days, I'm also one of the people that's been pushing this ordinance. It gives me no pleasure to sit up here and speak in an adversarial way to people that I respect so much, like those of the Erie Ale Works, Lavery, and many of the others. I understand the points that they're making. Unfortunately, I have to take a much longer view on this, a more holistic view on this, and that is for the city as a whole, and what we stand for and the standard that we hold ourselves to. The economic issues that I see impacting our city are long-run issues that will result from inaction here. There are less than two handfuls of municipalities in the United States that operate under the regime that we do. If you take a walk from Dobbins Landing to 14th Street at any time of any day, you understand As I say that, I'm sure you're walking through that, down that path in your head, and thinking about the things that you've seen, you've heard, and the reasons you'd never let your wife and two young kids make that walk at 6:00 PM on a Wednesday, or 9:00 AM on a Monday, or 9:00 PM on a Saturday. We face a multifaceted problem, deals with homelessness, poverty, the results of decades of redlining, which is inexcusable. There are a lot of institutions trying to make things work, doing the really hard things in this community, to turn things around here. This is not one of those hard things. This is one of those things that 99.99% of other municipalities, 4,000, sorry, 20,000 in the United States, and there's less than 10 that operate under this regime. This is not a hard thing, this is an easy thing to do, and we can do it, and we can do it without negatively impacting the businesses that are so concerned about the results of an ordinance like this passing. I've had a lot of conversations with people who may be impacted by this over the last few days. After a few minutes of conversation about why these ordinances make a lot of sense from a long-run, economic, holistic view, most of them come back to, but Jesus, Drew, you've dealt with the city, can you, like, really think we're going to depend on permitting to get this done in an efficient way? Do you really think that's something that, as a business owner... It deals with homelessness, poverty, the results of decades of redlining, which is inexcusable. There are a lot of institutions trying to make things work, doing the really hard things in this community to turn things around here. This is not one of those hard things. This is one of those things that 99.99% of other municipalities, 4,000, sorry, 20,000 in the United States, and there's less than 10,000 that operate under this regime. This is not a hard thing. This is an easy thing to do. And we can do it. And we can do it without negatively impacting the businesses that are so concerned about the results of an ordinance like this passing. I've had a lot of conversations with people who may be impacted by this over the last few days. After a few minutes of conversation about why these ordinances make a lot of sense from a long-run economic holistic view, most of them come back to, "But Jesus, Drew, you've dealt with the city. Can you, can you like really think we're going to depend on permitting to get this done in an efficient way? Do you really think that's something that, as a business owner, you'd be willing to do?" So I think we got two choices. The first one, let's punt. Let's bail. Let's do what Old Erie has always done. Take the easy way out, not change anything, because it would take work at the administrative level to handle this thing the right way. Or let's do the hard things together, city hall, city council, the private sector. Make sure that we have transparent enforcement accountability so that this doesn't happen again. The kind of accountability I'm talking about is aggressive accountability, especially in a time when we've got elections coming up, when people are listening and paying attention. I'm an optimist at heart, even though I'm standing up here ranting. I chose Erie. I convinced my wife, who's a longtime Erie resident, to move back here. I love this place. I love the businesses we've been able to build here, the roots that we're able to plant here, and the people that we've made friends with and the other businesses that I get to work with around town. All I want is for this city to be the best version of itself. Punting on the very basics of upholding standards of just basic quality of life in your city, that's not it. If we need to table this, I don't disagree with a lot of the people here that I think this may need some refinement. I don't want to be punishing people walking from house to house or from brewery to brewery. But I do think our primary public spaces need to represent the quality of life standard to which we're holding our city. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Reagan Peck. I live in town. I'm just over on West 8th Street. I actually own a little free pantry on West 8th Street as well outside of my home. So I'm very, you know, I, one of my main goals is to help, you know, feed the food insecure. So while I 100% agree with everything that was already said about the unhoused and the discriminating discriminating actions towards them with this legislation, I 100% agree with that. I did want to maybe kind of come up here and bring a different point of view, strictly from maybe the touristy side. I moved to Erie in 2001. When I first learned of this, the no open container law, I thought, wow, this is super awesome. I grew up in Titusville, went to college at Slippery Rock. So throughout the years, and this is just me, I mean, I'm not whatever. I have many friends that come and visit me. I have friends from Butler, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, a ton of friends and family from Titusville because that's where I'm from. My mom, who is turning 64 this month, actually texted me at 8:03 this morning and said, "Oh, my God, your city's trying to get away with the open container policy." Because one of the fun reasons my mom and dad like to come up to visit me is we like to go have a beer in the summertime and we like to take our beer walk to the next place. Every year, I have a silly wig party. I've had it for three, four years now in a row. I have a bunch of friends come in from out of town. We put on wigs and matching outfits. And we very responsibly walk from bar to bar. And I live close enough that we walk back to my place. And we will go and have a beverage, one or two beverages at one place. We take the beverage, walk to the next place. Just silly stuff like that, that I think that maybe you guys aren't realizing that just everyday citizens do take advantage of. That it's, it's just a cool thing. And just that so many people do come here for that cool thing. But also like, the idea of what you guys are trying to do to the unhoused too is really just super not cool. So that's all. Thank you.
Howdy, friends. I'm Anthony Morelli. Didn't know I knew so many of you up here. Ed, we lifted for a long time at Nautilus. Yeah, that was awesome. You watched me change my life in this town. Mayor, I just met you recently while holding a beer on Fourth Street. That's pretty cool. I don't know how many other people can say they met the mayor of their city while drinking a beer BSing with them. Chuck, we met while I was hosting trivia. We were both drinking beers on your birthday at Roscoe's. So I run, well, I do want to address something that Drew just said. There's a reason I specifically don't work with the EDDC downtown. My, me and my wife and my child walked down here drinking a beer. And then I let my wife and child walk back State Street to Lavery's. No, no scared, no anything. Ah, all right. I'm out of being worked up. I run Flagship City Comedy. I've started that here in Erie. Bobby Borja, who owns Keller's, moved a goalpost for me because of what I do around town. I'm building the comedy scene here. I put on all alternate shows to showcase the Erie talent that we have here and the tri-state talent. I work a lot with our breweries around town. And I've developed and maintained awesome relationships with these people and see how it impacts them. But in the spirit of being an entrepreneur, I had a goalpost move when Bobby Borja told me I wasn't allowed in his club because of what I do around town. Okay, I make my own goalposts. I started the Flagship City Comedy Festival. We're going into our third year. I run shows to benefit local nonprofits and donate back to them. And I'm super excited to actually announce to you guys here officially that I just put a deposit on a trolley bus to start doing tours around the area of city of Erie history stuff. So that way, we can park at certain areas, maybe do mafia tours or weird murder tours or whatever, do something on the Prescott. But when we stop, people can bring their own beers and enjoy it and then get back onto the bus and enjoy comedy as well. This ordinance kneecaps me immediately. It makes me hesitant to then continue to invest in Erie. And I know it's going to make other companies and other startups that have grown here in Erie and want to invest back into this town very hesitant on doing that. I've had some of the best times in my life supporting my uncle's band, Geek Army, at the Park Place when we had block parties, I was able to drink out there. I've had some good times where I was able to have a beer on the field at the Erie Seawall Stadiums. I know those are events, but that's just a part of the culture that we enjoy so much in this town. So thank you for listening to me tonight. Everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
I gotta follow the comedian. My name's Robert Salloway. I live in Erie. Been a bartender downtown for about six years. I'm here today to voice my opposition to the proposed ban on open containers in our city. While I recognize the concerns about public safety that have been raised, I believe this ban is not the solution. Instead, it risks doing more harm than good to our economy, community, and the culture of our public spaces. Let's start by considering the impact on local businesses, our small businesses, including popular spots such as our local breweries, rely on the ability to serve customers who enjoy the outdoors while responsibly consuming alcohol. Restricting this freedom could harm the ability to recover and thrive. After all, these businesses are still bouncing back from the challenges of recent years and we cannot afford to further stifle their potential for growth. Let's talk about tourism. Our city's atmosphere and events such as Celebrate Erie, Blues and Jazz Fest, Open Air Markets, and numerous heritage festivals draw visitors from all over the region. Responsibly enjoy, excuse me. One of the unique aspects of these events is that people can responsibly enjoy a beverage while walking around, which adds to the relaxing and inviting experience. If we impose a ban, we risk losing the charm that sets our city apart from others, weakening one of our city's key economic drivers, tourism. Regarding public safety, we already have laws that address public intoxication and disorderly conduct. The issue isn't just open containers themselves, but rather the behavior of a small group of individuals who violate these existing laws. Rather than imposing a blanket ban, we should focus on enforcing the regulations to target the real problem. Adding more restrictions would only make it harder for law enforcement to prioritize critical issues in our community such as violent crime or drug abuse, which require their full attention. Moreover, an open container ban would damage the sense of community and culture that we cultivate in our public spaces. Banning open containers would send a message that we don't trust our residents or visitors to responsibly enjoy these spaces. Instead, we should continue to promote the responsible use of public spaces, which brings people together and enriches the experience of living in our city. In conclusion, this proposed ban on open containers would stifle our local economy, strain law enforcement, and diminish the vibrancy of our public spaces. We should focus on responsible policies and enforce laws already in place rather than creating unnecessary restrictions. Let's keep Erie open, inviting, and full of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Emily Fetschko. I'm a citizen of Mill Creek Township. I work in the downtown, in the downtown improvement district, and I work for the Erie Downtown Partnership. This is a tricky one. It's a tricky one for us, as you can imagine. We're the organization people call when they have a problem. And we've had businesses of all types call us in favor of the ordinance, not in favor of the ordinance. We, of course, observe our own stuff that's happening downtown. Our ambassadors are out there cleaning every day, different debris, including from alcoholic beverages. We, of course, enjoy the park as frequent flyers of the park. We program Perry Square more than any other organization, doing almost over 100 individual events, whether small events or large events, in Perry Square. We work a lot with our friend Jeff McCullar, who always comes and provides beer to patrons. And we enjoy that privilege and we do see it as a privilege. For 20 years, though, the Downtown Partnership has really worked to make downtown Erie safe, fun, and welcoming. And our mission is to make Erie safe, fun, and welcoming for all. And that for all piece is something that we take pretty seriously. And through the pandemic, we've been really paying attention to what's happening in our downtown environment. How can we improve it? What barriers and challenges there are? I think we've done a really good job of convening people to have those conversations. And the good news about what's happening tonight is we're having the conversation. And I hope it doesn't stop here. I hope everybody that shows up with passion continues to have the conversation about how we make our downtown better. Because that's what we all want and it's what we deserve. We recently have been convening members of our business sector with our social service providers. I've had the pleasure to know and work with Mary Louise a lot. And she's been a really steadfast guide to us as we try and navigate how to help our homeless and vulnerable population. And I do agree that it's so much more about everybody and not just the homeless. It's cause and effect. It's cause and effect. And we have to figure out what cause is going to drive the most momentum. And we had these homeless summits over the course of July and August. I want to especially thank Kathy Schaff and Chuck Nelson, who when we invited them to hear about some of the barriers and challenges that we as an organization face, as our social service sector face, some of our businesses face. You showed up and you listened, so thank you. And you've done a lot of work to accelerate this conversation and to bring it to the foreground. And that takes courage. I have questions. And I think what I've come to understand after looking at the draft is perhaps this position isn't perfected. And I think if we're going to do this, we have to make sure we're doing it with a long-term lens. And we have to really think about penalties. We have to think about how we roll this out. We have to think about the narrative. We have to think about how we provide information to people that this is a change in our community. We have to think about signage and how that signageing hits. I mean, one of the worst things you can do in a community is have a bunch of signage that says, "No, no, 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 no. No smoking, no drinking, no skateboards, no bikes." It's not very welcoming. And I do want to see our, our businesses thrive, including our breweries and distilleries. So the Erie Downtown Partnership is always living in that tension. It's that constant tension of what do we do to make things right and to make things better? And I think part of it is having this conversation. And we're always open to learning because we can't possibly know everything about everybody's individual experience and how it impacts them. But I would say a few things, you know, we have considerations. Like, we would like to know more about how this would be enforced. We do very much care about the impacts on our homeless and vulnerable neighbors. And we would want to make sure that we're not creating unnecessary tension and stress, stressful interactions between those neighbors and our city police. We would want to make sure that, you know, this is something that we can measure, that we can be accountable for. I think that's really important. I'd like to know more about the permitting in relation to the events, how that actually works specifically, how it would impact our organization. And I think for us, we're also really concerned about going too far, too fast, which might sound a little crazy because I've talked to some of you about this issue. And it's an important one to address. But I don't think the position is quite perfected. I think in having these conversations, there's probably a lot that we can give and take. Everybody can win and get a little something. But we do have to make some sort of change. And I think a lot of that is around enforcement, code enforcement particularly. We've learned from the social service sector that, you know, nuisance businesses, small skills games, they make a difference. And it's the predation of vulnerable populations. So I would ask you to consider that as you consider the ordinance. And we would be a partner in helping to inform that every step of the way.
Thank you.
Michael Keyes, Erie PA. I would just first like to thank the lady from the Downtown Partnership that she has such a balanced view of this ordinance when most people do not. And even the thrust today has been a linear focus on what's going on in the four square blocks that sit directly to the north of us. When there is so much, when you talk about public parks and spaces, that does not include the four blocks to the north of us. And I would make a challenge to some of these people that any weekend during the summer underneath the pavilions at the bayfront and at the Roger Young, there are people who are celebrating various things, whether they're birthday parties or anniversaries. And they use those outdoor spaces that, because they are usually free to celebrate. And to, some of them have alcohol and some of them have liquor. And I think that we made this linear focus about downtown. It is not about downtown. And I go further to say that when someone talks about community values, I say you have to step into the community to know what the values are. The values right here are not the same as the values over there. And they are not the same as the values down there. And I see parks on all sides of this town who use these venues to celebrate things and may or may not have alcohol in them. And you know how I know they haven't been a problem? Because you haven't said anything. If they were a problem, we'd know. And so I think that we're taking the cart before the horse. If there's something needs to be done in a particular district or a particular place in order to keep order, that's fine. But a cart blanch is not fine. It's just not, you know, you know. A certain councilman has a band and they play at certain parks. And people sit there and enjoy, have a beer, and people cook out. And, you know, the, the community gets together. That's one of the things that community gets together around food and drinks, whether they're alcoholic or not. And so I also agree that I think this, this ordinance needs some tweaking. Because what you don't realize is we got places who serve alcohol now that have no seating. If I go get a slushie at the country fair and walk out the door with it, I can be arrested. Think about that. Think about, you know, some people might have a distressed moment and you don't want to go sit in their car, don't want to go home. Cars off, windows down. They, you know, Cars off, windows down, they, you know, there's already laws about drinking and driving. You know, I can't sit in my car on my own street and have a beer if that's what I like to do. So anyways, I just think that we haven't really thought these things out, and I don't, still don't know what adjacent, private property adjacent to public property. I don't know how that's spelled out or how that will work, you know? And so I think those are some of the things that need to be addressed in this ordinance before it's final passes. And for our most vulnerable people, you know, we put money to make this, the resource officers and to put them on the streets, and they're supposed to know how to navigate, you know, the people with mentally illness and the homeless populations. But now, probably 40 to 60% of these interactions are now going to be probable cause actions as opposed to a service action. Because if I don't have a house, all my containers are open. Everything I have. And so I don't have the capability of not having an open container in public if I live in public. And if you look at the Supreme Court ruling, whichever way it went, you know, we cannot criminalize being homeless or not having a place to put your things makes you subject to arrest.
Thank you.
My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chestnut. I am here today to say some things that the people of Erie are afraid to say, but I am not. First of all, I'd like to recognize our police department. I think we have a very fine police department. If people have known our police department back in the '60s, the '70s, the '80s, and the '90s, they would know this is a great police department. We also have a good garbage collection. I saw those guys on a windy day, garbage flying, everything, everywhere on Stafford Street. They're picking up the garbage, and they were cleaning the street. They were going in people's yards getting the garbage. I was really surprised about that. I also like to bring to mind city council. People are saying that city council is bought, because four people on city council vote the same way all the time. They vote together all the time. So they're saying city council has been bought. They're also saying that when a city council member said that they didn't have a job and council had to be their job, it was the job of the gentleman upstairs to take that individual and read something to them, which did not happen. And there's something foul about city council, the conditions to be on city council, and city council is a service position, not a paid position. But due to the fact people are making that a paid position, people feel that there should be a committee of these people behind me, myself maybe included, that would do a, what they call a job review? Because if you want to look at your job and you want to call yourself a job versus a service, then you should have a job review. And on that job review, you could be suspended or even kicked off of council, I guess, depending on what they come up with. But this should have been done, and it never was. Now, people do not like being taken on a weekend tour. There's people that view things, they come down here, they might view it on YouTube for what they tell me. You two have it, and they're viewing a weekend tour. Every time certain people talk, they take them on a tour, whatever that means. They need to check the water company about getting the bills out on a timely manner. It's hard to pay the bills as they are with the condition of people not working or jobs not being plentiful. So when you get in a rut and things aren't coming out in a steady fashion, that just puts you more in a rut. And also, I'd like to say that we have a PA Municipal Authority, which is the Water Department, and people are wondering why is the money for the Water Department, our payment, is not staying in the state of Pennsylvania? We have to actually send the money to Massachusetts. I don't think that's how that is done, but I will look into it a little bit more, because on that authority, they have a revenue review, and they also have financing. I haven't had time to look at that. In terms of what people are down here today saying, and I believe Mr. Keyes made a good point. If you go back to the days of the Good Cooks, the Twenty Graham, the Ed's and the Janey's, and those places that were all black-owned businesses, you couldn't even stand outside and drink a beer. You couldn't stand outside to talk, to talk. You had to either be inside, or you got to leave like I'm getting ready to do now. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
My name's Nadine. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. I'm from Vancouver, British Columbia, and I have to vote that I vote against this no, because this will have detrimental effects on businesses and the population, especially people who are unhoused and veterans, et cetera, which you did not consult. And there are laws in place already, and I have never, ever had issues in this beautiful, amazing Erie, Pennsylvania. I love the United States. I've been coming here since 2021. I am marrying somebody from here. And as a tourist, you know, to see that you guys want to criminalize even more things, this gets us nowhere. They tried it in Vancouver. I've seen things. I've done harm reduction since 2014, overdose prevention, all sorts of things, which is banned in Pennsylvania. And it costs more to the taxpayers. It clogs the jails up, like you're going to put a person in to have a beer in a public place. That makes me sad. I'm sorry I didn't have time to write a proper speech. It's degrading if you are a person that has nothing, also to the people, the normal person coming out of a business after work, just kicking back with friends. And I find it really sad that, you know, you guys don't do anything about secondhand smoke. I know it sounds silly, but you'll put somebody in jail for 90 days for a beer. You know, I could understand if they were being violent. We won't put hardened criminals away, but we'll go after somebody who had a beer and fine them? What if you're homeless? You can't pay that. What are you going to do? Oh, the Supreme Court said that homeless people have to go to jail for being homeless. And I know I'm kind of nervous right now. There will always be homeless and housing issues. There will always be someone, maybe it's you, you know? You guys have houses and stuff. What if you were having a beer? Are you not going to go to jail? And everybody else is just going to jail? I don't understand it. And there are bigger issues. Yes, people have alcoholism, but from what I understand in Erie, you can't go to a shelter. So if the cops come to a homeless person or even a normal person and want to take them to a shelter, they're not allowed in there because they've been drinking. So send them to jail to get beat up, who knows what? I just wanted to say I do love this place, but I vote no about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paige Bosniak, and I live in the city of Erie. And I'm here tonight to oppose the restrictions that are going to be put in place by the open container laws. I joked with a friend earlier that this is not so much of a second reading of this ordinance, but a last call for fun. And I'm quite concerned about the way that this law will impact the homeless population, especially as we face a housing crisis all across the country. We have to realize that with people living in their cars and unhoused, everything that currently happens in your house and in my house will be happening on the street where people live. And as we've heard tonight, too, from all of the local businesses, all of the breweries who represent a significant portion of the economy, this is going to make their, the sales of their products and the brand awareness that they get from the farmers' markets and festivals just even more scarce. So I would hope that this could at least be tabled, or if there is a vote tonight, I hope that you all would vote to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry, and I'm a student at Massey Health University. And I've been following the conversations, and mine is to say that as much as every person has spoken a lot, I don't want to repeat a lot, but we have seen about how these laws continue to, these policies can continue to criminalize those who are homeless. And I'm just wondering that, are we missing something? Like before we say like the open container policy, like what makes people have those containers open in the public? Is it because they don't have a place to do it? Is it because they are stressed? What is really, like, what is the underlying cause? And most of these things, as the person who was here before was saying, also criminalizing a bottle or an open container in the car. Suppose this person does not have any other place to live other than that place. So these policies clearly shows that there's criminalization of those who are marginalized. And are we missing something? What are other alternatives that are out there that maybe we have not explored? For example, like the root causes of homelessness, things like addiction, which is a disease. Do these people have, are they able to access the support that they need? Poverty, domestic violence, mental health illness, racial inequality, evictions, and maybe is our support systems, are they overburdened? So maybe when we explore like the root causes, why are these people on the streets in the first place? Why are these people drinking in the park? Like what is causing that? Are these people employed? Is there unemployment? What are we doing about that? Housing crisis? What are we doing about that? So I think like, maybe we should look at the root causes before we criminalize people and put people in jail. And remembering that research says the US, the land of the free, has the most population of people who have been put in jail. Do we still want to continue putting people in jail? And when you do that, what is the ripple effect? Imagine a woman who is homeless. You put them into jail. So what does that do? They lose their jobs if they have any. You disconnect them from their family if they have a spouse or a child, and thus continue to make just the ripple effect, the trauma of all this, being put in jail, all that time that is spent, 90 days, that's a lot, those are almost three months. And this will like just have another ripple effect. So I think that this will not really help, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck McKinney. I live in the area of 41st and Dexter. And it was brought to my attention the other day by a young lady who's going to come up and speak shortly after me about concerns about some, I'm not sure, a group home or a mental facility that they want to build up on 42nd and Dexter. I'm opposed to it, and without even coming to the neighborhood and mentioning to anybody two years ago, that wooded area where deer lived, all kinds of critters live there, okay? Now they're running around in the backyards of people's houses because they tore the woods down. And by tearing the woods down, it caused people's houses to flood. This one lady that's going to speak next said she had to spend $15,000 to put a system in her house to keep the water from coming in. Another lady across the street from me, she had to spend $10,000 to put a system in because all the water's running down. Cleared all that land out without talking to anybody about it. I'm here to oppose that facility. We got other places we can build it where it's not residential. We have young kids there, and the kids that they want to bring up there, it's not going to be a good scene. You got all that land down at Hammer Mill, where there's not a whole bunch of residential. Other places I can take you to? Don't, please, don't build it there. My next thing is, if you can hold off till I'm done, so I can get my five minutes, if you have answers. I'd like to know who pays for the security. It's a good thing, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just wondering, who pays for the security at the Spoon Basketball League? Who pays for the security at the downtown Day Pride Month, Black History Month, Erie Days, Music in the Park? The reason I'm asking is I loved Roar on the Shore. And one of the reasons, we don't have it anymore, and it was a big moneymaker for this city, big moneymaker, and it's gone. It was filling the businesses up, the restaurants, hotels, all the way to Meadville, but they wanted Roar on the Shore to kick in their fair share for security. I don't disagree with it, but if they're going to do it to Roar on the Shore, let's do it to all the other people that are having events downtown. Last thing I'd like to bring up, Mr. Bosinski, I want to thank you. You seem really concerned about the elderly living on a fixed income. And I remember it's been about, I don't know, I'm going to say a year and a half ago, when they increased the garbage rates, and you were opposed to it because the seniors can't afford it. I ain't going to mention names, but they're going to know who I'm talking about because they're sitting up here. I won't use a cuss word, but they had a crappy grin on their face, and they said they can afford it, they're getting a nice cost of living raise. That's terrible, absolutely terrible. He knows who he is. If he wants to come up and protect himself and say something about it, I'd love to hear what he has to say. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
My name is Mary Quirk, and I am a citizen of Erie, Pennsylvania. I just want to, I'm going against the open container law also. I don't understand what the big deal is. I mean, if you've seen me walking down the street with a beer in my hand, do I look like a bad person? Does anybody here look like a bad person walking down the street? I don't understand the views of what the big deal is. There are citizens that do live down here in the city, and they don't have a front yard. They don't have a backyard. They are on the streets or in the parks drinking. I mean, we do have laws already that, you know, against public drunkenness, but any ordinary citizen like myself, who's a 60-year-old lunch lady, who just happened today on my way walking here with my group of friends with a beer in my hand, a bunch of students from my school said, "Hey, Miss Mary, how are you?" Did I look like a threat to them? I just don't understand a person like me with a beer in my hand, do I look threatening to you, that I would be a nuisance? And that's basically just what I want to say. And that's basically just what I want to say is, I oppose the ban and I just don't understand the big deal. Thank you very much.
Live in the city here on the west side. I just think about the larger organizations that we have in this town, they're doing lots of good things. But a lot of the businesses that they help take, just from being in the city, can benefit from various tax incentives or tax breaks for development. And one of the things that the city needs for sure is more resources to deal with the issues that we have at hand as far as homelessness, mental health, police resources, and things like that. So I think about not just the drinking ordinance, but, you know, these organizations that are requesting some kind of reprieve through this prohibition of drinking, also are concerned about the bathroom situation and defecation in our streets, yet they are also the ones that have signs that say, "No public restrooms." Their tax abatement is the benefit of living in this city. I'm just sorry that you have to have neighbors that are disadvantaged, that you just don't like to walk by. I'm sorry that you have neighbors that don't have restrooms or don't have patios to drink beers on, and you have to deal with it. But you know, you have, I think that, you know, you're already getting the benefits of building and doing these good things, but it also affects other things. So I think that, that it's important to remember that. You have neighbors, just like I have neighbors, and these are challenges that we're trying to deal with. But, you know, these resources that are missing from the city for various reasons could be used.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lagone, I'm on the east side of Erie. I was here before about the roofing and stuff. The guy roofer said it wasn't, I thought it was, but there are different ones saying it isn't. I must hope to remember me if they have anything that can help me out, because I did want to the redevelopment and they said they still haven't got their funding in yet. I understand everyone's going to listen to everything, so when they, if someone knows anything, if somebody can help me get, for the roofing and stuff that I need to get done for to get up the code, I greatly appreciate it if you remember me so I can get the stuff done, so I can get myself in the house and get everything fixed so I can get going. That's all I want to say. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
May I say something to her? Ma'am, when you came in, there was a young woman in the foyer with the redevelopment authority. Did you happen to notice her at a table?
No, I got here late to have my grandkids, I took them up.
Okay.
I can't wait, I'm sorry.
All right, she comes to the evening meetings for assistance to help people with their needs of their housing. Thank you.
All right. I did speak to her, basically, didn't give anything in yet.
Hello, I'm Barbara Matlack. I live at 4103 Dexter Avenue. I'm here because of the, of the building of Perseus House Facility. And we still are very upset we haven't been included in, by the zoning board with any our ideas or anything. They seem to be doing things without our knowledge. We just found out on, I think it was Friday, that I happened to look in the newspaper and see a public notice that this was going to be the last thing, it was going to be on zoning, changes of zoning and things that are into zoning or anything, very, very, very complicated. Nothing has been explained why we're changing things and taking things out for uses of land. But all I know is, we have a very narrow piece of land, they want to put eight to 10 buildings in there with 45 kids, and they said it was a mental health facility, and that's how they originally did it. Now, I don't know how, I heard different things, but there's no way that this facility is a group home. They put in something about a comma that had to do with disabilities. We aren't even talking about that. We're talking about a, a single residence with six kids and a supervisor. That's a group home. And now they're bringing in 45 kids and they're adding offices, a gymnasium and stuff, and they, and now it's not called a, a group home, it's called a facility, I mean, it's called a group home. There's no way that that should have passed that way. And nobody even told us at that meeting that that's what they were doing. They said that we came there to oppose the variance, and then all of a sudden we, they come back and they say, "We decided we're going to call it a group home, so no variance is needed." That's not, but we have kids, we have senior citizens, it's very close to a number of different things, but as I brought up with ordinance 305.5, a rehabilitative facility cannot be within 500 feet of a park, a playground, a chapel, a church, a school, or any place that young kit minors are, congregate, so that they will not be in danger. And it's stated there, no matter if all the other requirements are there, if that's the case, you cannot apply for that. And it cannot change. And we also, as of today, applied for an appeal. I mean, we didn't, we didn't want to, we wanted to talk about it, we wanted to, but I don't see how you're going to even vote about the, the fifth thing on the, on the, on the agenda, when we haven't even settled this other part. And for the safety, we have a very, and it changes our neighborhood because we have people that walk their dogs, kids that are walking to the park, we have senior citizens that are walking around that, and it just doesn't make sense why we had to put it there. When I asked that of the, of the, of the people, the realtor, he, he told me so that, oh, it was at that Perseus House meeting, they told me it was because they would have to get rid of the people that are supervising, that they wouldn't qualify to, because they don't live in the city of Erie. And I said, "That's wrong," but they kept on cutting us off every time we objected to something. And at that second meeting, there really, there really wasn't, that was next day, there really, none of the zoning people said a word to answer our questions or anything. The only one that was running the meeting was the attorney for the zoning board. And it real, and he ran the meeting at Perseus House, which does not look good, and I'm not sure about the first one because I didn't know about this, but I just wanted to let you know, and I left something for all of you yesterday, because I went, because I thought the planning board would, does a different thing, and, and I left it so that all of you got a copy of why we were appealing and all this other stuff. But I just wanted, wanted to let you know that, that we didn't, we didn't want to go into the appeal thing. We wanted to see that it was, that it was passed, you know, but.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good night. Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? Please come forward. Please state your name and the municipality in which you live, and you have five minutes to be heard.
Hi, my name's Cassandra Scharr. I live in Erie, Pennsylvania, and I am born and raised here. I am a mother of two, and I am also a ramp certified bar, uh, bar manager. I am completely opposed to this passing. I think, when we think of the kind of person that we are trying to impose this upon, the person that we have an image in our head, I guarantee that we're all picturing a homeless person on the sidewalk. To me, this just seems like an attack on the poor, on the homeless. You're not picturing me and my husband at an event with our children just having like a beer and talking with our friends. It's not what you're picturing. We already have laws in place against intoxication, we already have laws in place against harassment. This comes across classless. And whether we like it or not, the people that we see that are standing outside of convenience stores, those are people who are in our community. You don't like the way they're dressed, you don't like the way that they decide to talk with each other and interact, and it makes you feel unsafe. You're not ingrained enough in the community. Being a part of a community means everybody in the community. And I just fear that we're just going to become more divisive, that we already have, so much right now in the world, we already have an us versus them mentality, whether it's classism or racism. And by passing something like this, not only are we hurting local businesses, keeping a community from interacting with one another by being out, by being social, I just, I don't see any upsides. I think that, that it is just very clear, the kind of demographic, and that it's, you're not taking away that problem. You're just throwing people in jail for the small little moments of joy that they do get to have. We have so many unhoused people right now. And when they are able to get together the money to spend $2 on a drink and stand there and talk with their friends, and you want to throw them in jail for that or fine them for that, you're just, they already have nothing. And I, and I just know that is the thought process behind this. You're not caring about the couple college kids, you're not caring about people that are standing around their sidewalk, drinking with their neighbors. It's so evident to me what the focus is, and it's really disappointing. And I would be really upset and disappointed in my city that I have loved and known for 29 years that, if this were to go through. Thank you.
Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard tonight? Do we have any other citizens who would like to be heard? I'm hearing and seeing none, we will move on. Go ahead, Lori.
Ordinances for final passage, council file number 16460, official ordinance 482024, and ordinance amending Article 704, alcoholic beverages, and more specifically amending Section 70401, adding Section 70402, consumption on public or private property, 70403, consumption in motor vehicle, 70404, open containers on public or private property, 70405, discarding containers, and 70406, exemptions.
Madam President?
Yes?
May I speak?
Go ahead.
First off, I voted no for this the first time. After the first time, I talked to the chief, Chief of Police Dan, and he said this would be another tool for them. It wasn't exciting, it was just not something that the chief was pushing, I'll make that clear. We're finding out tonight that there's a lot more people involved in this than I think any of us originally knew. And I don't feel that we should try to make a decision tonight with one board member not here. So saying that, I would like to make a movement to table this.
I'd second that.
And a second for Mr. Titus.
A motion from Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Titus, to table this ordinance. Members Brzezinski?
Discussion about the table.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think this is something that we can clean up, and if there's concerns, I think those can be addressed, and, and I think that's looking to stretch it out beyond what's necessary.
I'm not opposed to having the table move forward and waiting to the next meeting to have Councilmember Witherspoon be able to vote, that way we will have all members of council voting on this.
Madam President?
Yes?
I know I just voted to, to, to second this. I had originally voted yes on the ordinance, and if I could, if I could go back in time to vote no, I, I would. I think that this undeniably, no matter what we do to change this ordinance, undeniably will target a very specific group of individuals who are either in desperate need of help or who are simply enjoying their community, and I don't think that there's any way we can create this ordinance that, that does not cause harm to those who do not have the privilege of having a public space to convene or gather with family or to gather with friends. I think that the, any way that this ordinance is crafted, that it is going to cause harm in a very, in a very specific way towards a very specific group of people, and I do not think that this is a holistic approach. I think it is punitive in nature, and I, I know we desperately need to create some change, but I, I do not believe that this is, this is the, the venue or, or the avenue to do any of that. This is through creating an ordinance that will penalize or, or punish anybody. And I know I'm voting to table, but I, I did want, and I'm, I'm really, I'm begging my colleagues to please, at minimum, please table this, or to vote no. I'm begging.
Yeah, point of order, most of that was addressing the ordinance and not the motion to table. You know, this would be a matter of tabling as to whether or not we need more time to address issues on here. Most of that was regards to Councilmember Titus. We'll be voting no on this, that's not a matter of tabling.
Issue of the full board was also brought in here, we're missing one.
The reason I, I shared that is, is when we are going to think about what, if tabling, if anything, is going to change the discussion on some of the members of voting, even once it's off the table, I just wanted to make my, my stance clear.
Madam President?
Yes?
I, I think it, it won't hurt to have more time to make a, a wise decision. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm kind of on the fence on whether this is one that targets a certain group, because I mean, it's like, it's not like this is a new, there's bigger cities that have ordinances all over the country, so I'm not sure if that's the case. I think we can use that as an excuse not to have anything. I think we need to make, take more time to make a, a better decision that'll make.
Everyone happy?
I don't know if we're ever going to make everyone happy, that rarely happens. But I mean, we can, what's two more weeks, what's, you know, another month? I do agree with taking more time to make a sound decision. And like I said, I don't necessarily agree that it's just targeting a certain group, because it's not like it's a new thing around the country.
Right.
There's lots of other places. And you heard people say tonight, "Oh, I love Erie because we can do this, I can't do this in the city where I came from." So I mean, there's arguments on both sides, and I think we could benefit from taking more time to make a better decision. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to voting on the motion on the floor to table it until we have a full council at the next meeting. And then also tweaking and amending to see if we can find a happier ground for people to be on. I know that the discussion has been that businesses would like to have some type of mediation and officers, and the people who handle the downtown situations can't really do much because we have the ordinance that allows people to drink. If we implemented this, this would If we implemented this, this would be allowing the officers to engage and tell people to move along. But it also would make it to where people aren't in the public parks right now drinking. We already have a lot of officers on site when we have these events, but they can't necessarily engage or say much other than, you know, be respectful. And hopefully, people can coexist. So I'm okay to vote on the motion.
Mask, this is a sort of a point of clarity.
Go ahead.
So if we vote to table this, then it becomes tabled, and we no longer have a platform to have this as a discussion? Do I understand that correctly? We wouldn't, once we table it, it becomes a point that we're no longer discussing.
Tonight, it's over, right?
Is there any way to, if this motion fails to table, can we then discuss the ordinance and then recall a second vote to table and see if anything changes? Can we make two different votes to table it? We cut out discussion, so I'm a little concerned about how this can move forward.
Well...
This needs discussed.
A couple, it's, conceivably, you could have two motions to table.
Okay.
But I mean, technically, a motion to table is a non-debatable motion. We've just made a motion to table and engaged in debate. So I'm not here to stop anybody for that. If council wants to be heard and wants to, you know, flesh out ideas, I don't want to stop that. But if, if the motion to table passes, we're done talking about it tonight. If it doesn't pass, then we want to talk about the ordinance or talk about potential amendments to the ordinance or then revisit the concept of tabling. If that were to come up, I think it could happen.
Motion to table, Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson?
No.
Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. Motion to table passes, yays five, nays one.
Have a good night.
Communicate.
Good night, students.
Wow. I've never seen a place clear out so fast in my time on council.
Yeah, I know that. That's why I tried to do it quickly.
Moving right along?
Yeah.
Yep, on to the next.
Council File Number 16461. Official ordinance 492024. An ordinance amending Article 119, Section 11905, compensation of city treasurer. The compensation of the city treasurer is fixed at $75,000 effective Monday, the first Monday of January 2028. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16461, and now known as Official File Ordinance 492024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 492024, finally by yays six, nays zero. Council File Number 16462. Official ordinance 502024. An ordinance amending Article 121, Section 12110, compensation of city controller. The city controller compensation would be fixed at $75,000 annually to be effective commencing the first Monday of January 2026. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16462, and now known as Official File Ordinance 502024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 502024 by yays six, nays zero. Council File Number 16463. Official ordinance 512024. An ordinance amending Article 113, Section 11308, compensation of mayor. The compensation of the city mayor is hereby fixed at $120,000 annually to be effective commencing the first Monday of January 2026. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Number 16463, and now known as Official File Ordinance 512024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf?
No.
Titus?
No.
Troop? Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 512024, finally by yays four, nays two.
Folks, this is a footnote on that. The mayor has already come forward saying that he would, if win, if when he wins here next year, he's not going to take that price increase. That $120 was put in there for the younger people who may be looking five years down the line. Because $120 isn't a whole lot now. And five years from now, God knows what it's going to be.
Right.
That's the logic behind it. And that's why I put that forward. I'll be probably pushing up daisies by that time anyhow. Anyway, enough said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council File Number 16464. Official ordinance 522024. An ordinance amending Official Ordinance 802005, known as the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Erie, by amending Articles 2, 3, and 6 of the City of Erie zoning ordinance to promote flexibility in accommodating various land uses in the city zoning districts, reduce administrative barriers, and enhance development potential and investment throughout the city of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16464, and now known as Official File Ordinance 522024, be finally passed by City Council as amended.
Discussion. Hey, I'd like to point out, I mean, I love the crowd that we had for the beginning of the meeting and all the, the discussion about where our priorities were and where things were getting done and the number of people that discussed the housing crisis and how we're not doing anything of substance. And, and I appreciate that they're still here to be witnesses to this. Those of you that are still here.
Both of them.
Yeah. This is, uh, this is what we, the Planning Commission put forward in November, that the City Council reaffirmed in January, that we've been working on to establish better housing development. ADUs, the middle housing that's missing, lot minimums, parking minimums being reduced to make developing houses easier. We've been working on this. This was one of the, the four things I ran on. So I'm, I'm really excited to see this moving forward and for all the people that had such a passionate concern about the housing crisis and the homeless today. I'm really excited to see that this is going to be...
Ma'am, he's speaking.
This is going to be, um, you know, I think, I think, uh, there's a lot of things bundled in with it, but this is a lot of the things we've been working on for a year now. So I'm excited to see it move forward.
Madam President?
Thank you. Go ahead, Tyler.
I really, I do want to commend my colleague, Mr. Nelson, on this one. Thank you. This is a lot of the work that has been and done, that you all have done and pushed forward with this is, is the action we need to address the housing crisis. So thank you. And I know it's just the beginning, but thank you genuinely. There is one amendment that I would like to request, though. We, the word, we've used mental handicap throughout in some spots. If we could change that to be disability or cognitive disability, just so that it's, it's where it should be language-wise.
Are you making that a motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend that, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Lori, can you make sure that happens?
Call for...
We have to vote on it first.
Alrighty.
Okay, so we're amending language?
Yes.
Councilmember Titus, would you tell her the exact words of the sum?
To change from handicap to cognitive disability?
So in, in the, the current language, I believe, there, there's a, I think it's 30, 305.10. Don't, I'm pulling there, where it says mental handicap. If you could change that to either disability or cognitive disability so that it's reflective. It's reflective of, of the language we should be using.
Voting on the amendment, Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. The amendment passes, yays six, nays zero. Voting on the ordinance? Councilmembers Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 522024, finally as amended by yays six, nays zero. Sorry. Council File Number 16465. Official ordinance 532024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $12,500 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue. For the expenditure thereof, this contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, from the FFY 2022 Certified Local Government Grant. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16465, and now known as Official File Ordinance 532024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 532024 by yays six, nays zero. Council File Number 16466. Official ordinance 542024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, from the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant Number 2023 PR 02252. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16466, and now known as Official File Ordinance 542024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 542024 by yays six, nays zero. Council File Number 16467. Official ordinance 552024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, from the Keystone Historic Preservation Grant Number 2022 PR 02458. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Titus, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16467, and now known as Official File Ordinance 552024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 552024, finally by yays six, nays zero. Council File Number 16468. Official ordinance 562024. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $517,746.34 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. From the sewer fund balance, the funds were received from the revenue replacement in 2022 to pay for the incinerator repair upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant and only partially expended in 2023. The project is ongoing and needs to be re-appropriated for 2024. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16468, and now known as Official File Ordinance 562024, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council passed Official File Ordinance 562024 by yays six, nays zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16469. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue to be received from the Business Development Fund for utilization in the flagship Commodore Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Number 16469, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16469 by yays six, nays zero on first reading. Council File Number 16470. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,846,235.16 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. The funding is from the ARP Revenue Replacement Funds. Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance, Bill Number 16470, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
We did this not too long ago. So it was all explained then. However, we just need to go through this a little more formally to make sure that it's all set with the Treasury Department. This takes away all the red tape for us to use federal money for the American Rescue Plan and extends our deadlines, which was a big part of the red tape. And none of the money is being moved beyond how it was originally allocated. Mostly for the public's sake, to get that on the record.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I don't see or hear any. Go ahead, Lori.
Sponsored by Councilmember Schaaf, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the Council File Ordinance 16470, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16470 by yays six, nays zero on first reading. We need to go into old business. I didn't forget that, just the date. This is sponsored by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Schaaf, pursuant to Pennsylvania 47 PS 4-461B3 and a public hearing held before City Council on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, the request to transfer liquor license number R 3380 from KND's Last Stop LLC, 14 East State Street in the borough of Albion, Erie County, PA to Taco Distro LLC, 2056 West A Street in the city of Erie, Pennsylvania, be hereby approved. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, Troop, Flores. Resolution passes, yays six, nays zero. Before we go into new business, I'd like Council to scratch number 12 in purchase orders. It's a duplication. We put it in new business, and the purchase order, it's not a purchase order.
Move the bills?
I second.
Okay. Motion to move the balance of the agenda. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Shaw. Um, any separations?
Yeah, do we have any separations? It doesn't look like we have any separations.
Okay, moving the balance of the agenda. Members Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, Troop, and Flores. Okay. All the way to committee reports?
Alrighty, um, as far as the order of the committee reports, we can go with, um, Councilmember Titus first, and then we'll work our way down.
Madam President, I don't have a committee report for this evening. Thank you.
That is okay.
Actually, you know, I do want to commend my students, because they're probably still watching who came. So my students were here, so thank you for, for them coming, even though it was part of their grade. Uh, and one got up and spoke, and I thought they did an excellent job, so.
That's awesome.
There's my report.
Thank you for bringing them, and I look forward to future conversations with them all. Alrighty, Councilmember Troop?
Madam President, um, just real quick, I want to, um, say that I enjoyed myself at the Fiesta on the Square. It was a great event, and I want to find out who that band member is who's bringing all those people to the park to drink. Is it Chuck Nelson's band? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Um, for a community announcement, probably one thing. I, actually, the, the clerk staff, uh, one of the women in the office pointed out that I hadn't been in much, uh, these last two weeks. Uh, probably a big part of it, I realized afterwards, is that Porch Fest is coming up on September 28th. It's the last Saturday of this month. Um, you'll be allowed to drink, uh, we have, well, Jeff, that you saw here earlier, uh, pouring beers in the park. Um, although the organization has a million-dollar insurance policy, so it would have happened like that either way. Um, and there will be 26 bands, uh, throughout the West Bayfront neighborhood. Starting at noon, there will be five bands, uh, every hour thereafter, for the next five hours, there will be five bands an hour for the fifth anniversary, uh, with the, uh, grand finale being, um, I can't remember the name of the band. I'm sorry. Barry King, how'd you remember that?
It's a part of him.
No, I'm just kidding, it's Mo. Uh, Barry King Blues Band is the grand finale there. Um, so 26 bands, uh, and it's, it's a great neighborhood event. And then I, I think the, uh, open container ordinance took up the rest of my week. Uh, a lot of those meetings are very enjoyable, so, uh, even by people that were on the other side of that vote, uh, probably more enjoyable with the brewers. Uh, so, uh, that was a, a significant amount of time in the last two weeks. That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank everyone who came today and spoke their peace of mind. It takes courage to do that, and your voice does matter. But please don't assume that we're judging and thinking a certain way, because unless you've walked a mile in our shoes and know us deeply, personally, and live with us every day, you don't know us. Um, I attended the Sewer Authority meeting this week, and they're asking for an upcoming October study session to, uh, talk about all of their engineering projects that, um, they're going to have in the future. And it is a common practice of theirs, um, to let City Council know what they're doing. I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and, um, last night was at the Jefferson Society for their racial justice policy initiative with the Erie Regional Chamber. And, um, I continue to support, um, their ongoing, uh, years, um, three years study. I attended the Syrian Culture Society grant opening and was honored to be a part of that, and attended Representative Joanna McClinton's Speaker of the House, um, speech at the Second Baptist Church, and was also at Infinite Erie along with, um, other community partners, um, near Second and Parade to get ECAT. This took a lot of collaboration with community partners to, uh, have trades learning right on the job as they repair a house. When inside, the house looks fine on the outside. On the inside, it needs a lot of work. So how wonderful that people will be getting on-the-job training as they go to school, as well as, uh, get their certification. They also best had purchased four other buildings, so it's not just going to happen with the one on Parade Street. And, um, I know that the R. West Bayfront is also doing similar things like this. So, um, anything to help the housing industry is so important. I, uh, watched the Land Bank meeting and, uh, attended the Fiesta on the Square, as well as the Irish Cultural Society. So, um, thank you to all involved. Those two events take a huge undertaking. It's a year thing, so it's over, and then they start again to plan for the next event. I, um, have other things to say, but I'm going to pass since it's been a long night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw, Ed Brzezinski, well, Councilmember Brzezinski.
Sure you want a minute? I love you. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, I get a chance to, to brag a little bit here. The past week, uh, my wife Cheryl and I were fortunate enough to have some good friends from out of town come in that have never been to Erie. So we took them down to the, the bayfront, had a nice little lunch at, uh, Mr. Melody's Pier Six, and then took a walk so I could take them all the way down to Daubens Landing. Well, we're going through the parking lot, and I'm seeing all these cars. Gus Pine is doing one heck of a job with the Civic Center, and believe it or not, they had a fireworks conference at, uh, at the Civic Center that day, I guess that weekend, starting it on that day. Uh, I couldn't believe it. As we were walking along, folks were walking along too. We met a guy from Hawaii, Texas, state of Washington, just, they were saying hello. They were, you know, they weren't drinking or anything, they were just happy to be in Erie. It was a, a great, great time, and these folks are from the great city of Buffalo. They couldn't believe that we have a nice city like Erie. I even took them to Prescott, showed them that a little bit. So it, it was a nice, a nice outing and a real big feather in our bonnet, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, by the way, any of you folks who have not seen everything that's going on at Civic Center, let me know. Gus, we'll set up a tour, and we can, you know, take you on the whole biz. It's pretty shoving, it's pretty neat. So I was happy about that. Let's not forget about the, the biggest part, that little baseball stadium over there. Tomorrow night, Sea Wolves take on Akron for the second game in the playoff situation. Should be a full house, and there might be an open container or two out there, I'm not sure. But it, it'll be a great time, uh, if anybody cares. The Big Tigers are winning four to one right now. Not that I'm watching them that closely, but I, a lot of folks probably don't know I was born in Detroit, in Hamtramck, the Polish section of, of Detroit at the time. And, uh, I've been living and dying with these guys for a long time. I was going to wear my Tiger shirt today, because this is September. And I haven't been able to root for the Tigers meaningfully in September since, I think, 2015. But they're a good bunch of young kids, and most of those young kids played right here, in Erie. And that's a wonderful thing for us, too. Uh, that's all I have for tonight, and, uh, thanks for putting up with us. It was a long one.
Alright, thank you. Um, I'll be short and quick. I just want to say that it was a great turnout for the Fiesta on the Square for two, a year or two. I know the community's looking forward to what's going to be planned for next year. Um, Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month goes from September 15th throughout October 15th, so it's a great way to just learn about different cultures, try new foods, and just engage your friends who might have been brought up in that background. I also just want to, um, mention that I'll be a celebrity bartender for the Sisters of St. Joseph on September 20, 27th. Yes, it's a Friday. Councilmember Mo is going to be playing with his bands. I'm not, I don't recall the time, which is horrible on my end, but it's been a long week, and there's lots of different things going on. Um, but the, the whole time is going to be from 5:30 to 10:00. You can come during specific times that each bartender is going to be on for the hour and support and raise money for a great cause. They do a lot of great work in Little Italy. Um, and it's at the Nora Wora Club. Um, I also want to mention that the Sea Wolves are doing great in the playoffs, so let's hope that they continue going. Um, they make us proud, so it would be great if they won again. That would be year two. Um, I also want to mention that we will be volunteering with the zoo coming up. A few of us on the 28th, which is the day after, if I'm not mistaken. Um, the day that I'm, and it's also the day of the Women's Rally, which will be going on between 1:00 and 3:00. Um, I'll be involved in that as well. So that is all I really have to report. It's been a great season. It's been a lot of wonderful things around the community. I look forward to seeing what we will be doing next year, um, because it's too sad to think that the summer is already over, and we have to be planning for other things. So let's hope for another year of saving in our budget for snow removal and snowplows, because I don't even want to think of that stuff, but I know we've been blessed the last couple of years. That's all I have to report. Does the Solicitor's Office have anything to report to us today? None? Does the mayor and his administration have anything? Alrighty, no? So it's been a long meeting. Thank you, everybody who came out to be heard. It's always great to see people who want to come out and be, um, engaged. It's been kind of lonely the last couple of months that we've been on our summer tour, but it's always good to see people wanting to be heard, so, thank you.
Madam President?
Sorry.
I forgot to tell them about the alligator.
Oh, yeah, did we find it?
No alligator sightings.
City Council adjourns at 9:15 PM. Members Flores, Brzezinski, Nelson, Shaw, Titus, and Troop.